Try to answer, try to answer toward the end of the forum. Let me just introduce the candidates. I'm going to do that alphabetically by last name. Jessica Almeida and Mike Crudell, Stan Haladic and Kristy Lazaro. Apologize if I messed up anybody's name and I'm going to turn it over to our moderator, Susan Ferris. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Ferris Rights. I'm past president of the League of Women Voters of New Providence Berkeley Heights and Summit. And I do a lot of candidate moderating. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan organization that is dedicated to empowering voters by giving them opportunities to learn about candidates and issues, but not in a partisan manner. And so this evening, we have an opportunity to hear from four candidates that are running for office in West Caldwell for the West Caldwell Town Council. And what we're going to do tonight is each candidate is going to give an opening statement that will last for two minutes. And then I'm going to ask a series of questions. Each candidate is going to have an opportunity to answer that question. They get 60 seconds. We have a timekeeper. Timekeeper is going to demo right now this, they're going to get a 30 second reminder that they have 30 seconds left and then they get a stop at the end of their minute. Obviously, if a candidate is speaking a sentence, the expectation is that they finish their sentence and not stop speaking. Once we're done with the questions, at the end of each question, each candidate will have an opportunity for a 30 second rebuttal. So we could actually have each candidate answer a question and then each candidate offer a rebuttal to each question. At the end, we're going to have an opportunity for the candidates to give us closing statements. And then that's basically what we're going to do. We're going to end it. I do want to remind everyone before we get started that there are three different ways that you can vote this year. One is you can use your vote by mail ballot that you may have already received. We have in Union County already received them. You're also going to have an opportunity to do in-person early voting. And what that's going to entail is that from Saturday, October 23rd until Sunday, October 31st, Halloween, you're going to be able to vote essentially seven days a week for a total of eight days. And there are polling locations set up in your county. You'd have to check with your county to see where that is, but you can go and actually vote in person. Your third option to vote is that you can go to your traditional polling place and vote on election day as you may have done in the past. So let's get started. So I'm going to start my question and I'm going to start with Mike Crudell. And the first question that I would like to ask you, which everyone's going to get to.
Are we doing opening statements, Susan?
Oh yeah, that would be even better if we did that and I didn't skip ahead on my script. Yes, let's do that. Okay. So Mike Crudell, could you start out with your opening statement?
Certainly, Susan. So first of all, good evening, everyone. I want to start by expressing my sincere appreciation to the progress, the League of Women Voters, Kathy, Susan, Donna, for putting this event together. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mike Crudell, two-term West Caldwell councilman. I am serving as the current council president. I'm a husband and proud father of three children. I graduated locally here from Montclair State University with a degree in political science. Returned to Montclair State for a master's degree in business management. Twenty-one years ago, I founded a technology company in my garage, which with a ton of hard work and a great staff has grown into a multimillion dollar corporation that we run here in the West Essex area. Although I grew up in Clifton, when it came time for my wife and I to choose a place to raise our family, we chose West Caldwell and we made that choice 12 years ago for many of the same reasons that people make that choice today. First and foremost, it's a safe community. It has well-run government, great services, lots of recreation programs, a fantastic library and dare I say for North Jersey, fair and stable taxes. In an effort to serve the community that I love, I volunteered as a youth sports coach for many years, served on the Camp Wainoki Commission, the Board of Health, Senior Citizen Transportation Board, the Municipal Alliance Committee, and heavily involved with my parish here at St. Aloysius in Caldwell. I've certainly come to love the township of West Caldwell. It's been my pleasure to serve my neighbors for the past six years as a councilman and currently as council president. And in conclusion, I just want to point out that when it comes to municipal government, it's not easy. In government or any job, experience matters and I'm looking to take my six years of experience and put it to good use by serving another term here on the West Caldwell Town Council. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, and let's hear from Stan Haladic.
Thank you, Susan. I'd also like to thank the league for having us here tonight and the progress. And I look forward to a spirited debate and welcome the two candidates as well. I'd like to say a little bit about myself for those of you who don't know me. I also grew up in Clifton, attended Clifton High. So I don't know if it's something about balding guys from Clifton that work well for West Caldwell, but it seemed to be pretty good. I am married to Megan Haladic, who is also known as Megan Shannon, aka of the 14 Lombard Drive, West Caldwell Shannon clan and the oldest of 10 siblings. So the apple didn't fall far from the tree. After 20 years of marriage to Megan, we were blessed with five children. And those five children are my dream. I get up every day for them. And Megan and I knew West Caldwell was the place we wanted to raise our family. And everybody who's listening tonight, I think that's what it is. It's all about family. And that's one of the reasons I'm running for reelection is to protect what we have and keep West Caldwell the beautiful bedroom community it is. I think it was ranked fourth out of 660 municipalities by New Jersey State Magazine right before COVID. I haven't seen the rankings since then, but that's saying a lot and being number four is is just a dream come true to actually give back to my community. I basically have always told my children, you have to speak up, volunteer, get involved. And that's my way of giving back. I've served on the zoning board from 2004 to 2009. I've been a library board trustee for six years and now I am finishing up the 12th year of my fourth term on West Caldwell Council. And I look forward to debate, the debate, and I ask everybody listening for your vote on Tuesday, November the 2nd for reelection. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is an intro from Jessica Almeida.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to everybody again for being here tonight and for hosting this forum and giving us all the opportunity to present ourselves to the attendees and everybody who is watching. So, good evening. My name is Jessica Almeida and as formerly known as Jessica Len Tenney, I am a lifelong resident of West Caldwell, save when I was in law school and undergraduate. I attended Washington Elementary School, Grover Cleveland Middle School, James Caldwell High School, lifelong parishioner at St. Aloysius as well, except for a brief stint at Notre Dame where I met Stan and his wife Megan. I have been involved in our community since I was able. I have been a member of not only the Kiwanis Club, but also when high school, the Key Club. I have made it a personal mission in my life to do things for other people, to seek out things that I think need to be done and to work with the resources in our community to help and make those things happen. I have lived in the house where I live. It was actually my grandparents' house. My children are the fifth generation of my family to live in this house. And I'm married, my husband Philip, who's telling everybody behind me, it's time for dinner with my three kids who are eight, five and two. I, in addition to Kiwanis, I am also a volunteer at my children's school. I am a volunteer at our church and I am, most importantly, a redevelopment and land use attorney. I am very familiar and have experience in dealing with matters that are going to be facing West Caldwell in the future. So thank you again for everybody and thank you so much for allowing us to come together this evening.
Great. Thank you. Okay, and last for the intro is Kristy Lazaro.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. I'm sorry if I sound a little garbagey. I'm dealing with a sinus infection right now. I'm currently a middle school social studies teacher and I'm actually in a classroom, which is nice. I said to everyone earlier, the Zoom thing is very strange to me right now. I do also have a legal background. I worked in real estate law and family law. I worked in child advocacy in the courtroom. So I dealt with some of the worst of the worst child legal cases. And I'm running for West Caldwell Township Council because I think we can do better for our taxpayers. My husband and I moved to West Caldwell. Conveniently enough, if you know me well, my sister lives around the corner from me and we chose the house we did because my sister lives around the corner and my parents live seven minutes away. And I absolutely love the fact that she is my neighbor. But as times gone on, you know, certain things have come up that have been a little bit frustrating and I feel that, you know, we need to bring fresh, balanced perspective to the chemical. We need to improve transparency. We need to innovate and some hard work needs to be done to help our community solve some of the really complex problems that have come up. So we need to create value for our taxpayers. I know I didn't grow up in West Caldwell. Neither did Stan, neither did Mike. I grew up in the same area they did. I grew up in Nutley, right around the corner from them. So I appreciate small town life. It's something I'm accustomed to. The charm is something that drew me to West Caldwell. And I also want to preserve what makes our town special, but I also think we need to look for fixing some of the things that are going wrong right now. But we don't need to sacrifice the health, safety and ability to maintain a home in town. And I think that's an issue that's facing a lot of our friends and neighbors right now. So, you know, I think that, you know, adjusting things is not the worst way to go. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, okay, let's move on to the questions now, since I'm in the right place of my script. Okay, so question one, I'm going to start back again with Mike Crudell. And we're going to do question one, which is, what should the council do to deal with the storm water problems? What should the council do to deal with the storm water problems? Go ahead.
Thank you, Susan. So flooding is obviously a big issue right now. My heart goes out to the residents on Sylvan Park, Westview, Stony Brook, down on Jamadi and Dalewood and all the streets in the garden sections that have experienced flooding. But I just want to point out that since we had a storm in August of 2018, it was quiet until recently. And then we had three significant rain events in two months. We have 17 tributaries running through the town and those tributaries spill over their banks during storms. And these storms brought a particularly large amount of rain surging in a short period of time. Used to be highly unusual, now seems to be becoming the norm, not certainly not our fault, certainly seems to be some climate change that clearly we have no control over, but the town received 30 or 35 complaints. We've investigated each and every one. We have retained our engineering firm to investigate the problem, map it out and try to come up with a comprehensive plan to deal with it. Because we can't deal with it on a home by home basis. We're just going to push the problem downhill to somebody's neighbor. So we want to get a big picture solution that we can implement in the future.
Thank you. Okay, and Stan, what should the council do to deal with the storm water problems?
So I'll explain what we're doing already. I mean, we worked very hard after Ida to listen to all the residents who had issues. And we pushed very hard for the state to recognize Essex County as a disaster area. So people who've had issues can absolutely go to FEMA under nj.gov/ida. That's nj.gov/ida for assistance. So we're working to do multiple things. As Mike said, we're waiting for engineer reports. But what we started is a program for cleaning out all of our storm drains. So that is important to make sure that the water flows. We've also applied to the DEP so that we can look at cleaning all those tributaries. You can't touch them without approval. And there's trees down and then there's things in them that can improve the water flow as well. And, you know, we've also, and we're waiting for the professionals to do a camera study of the underground sewers and drainage pipes to see if there's any collapses that are preventing or contributing to some of this water backup. So those are the things we're doing right now.
Great, thank you. Okay, Jessica?
Hi, first, I live on Stony Brook, so I'm very intimate with the flooding. I have watched the brook. I've lived in this particular house for six years. I've watched the brook erode my yard to the point where I've lost probably 10 feet of bank in one spot. And that didn't start in 2018. That's something that's been going on. Now, the storm that Mike referenced on August 11th, 2018, prior to that, citizens had started a group and had, myself included, gone to the town to ask for help with this because there is so much that needs to be done. We're looking at infrastructure that was put in place when my grandparents bought this house in 1960. There are so many things that you, as the council or whoever, needs to do to protect our residents. There are people whose houses are coming closer and closer to the precipice of these brooks. What needs to be done is not just contacting the town engineer maze or whatever they're called by now, but actually working with the surrounding communities, calling contractors, cleaning out the sediment in the pipes that are underneath our, that go under the road.
Thanks. Okay, and Kristy Lazaro?
I had a friend contact me in town last week. She knew that I lived in New Orleans during Katrina and lost everything and had to work with FEMA firsthand. And she asked me if he could appeal to FEMA because she didn't get much from them for everything she lost in her basement, including her electrical system and her homeowner's insurance wouldn't cover the tree that fell into her garage because they deemed it an act of God. So she suffered a loss. She couldn't get flood insurance because she doesn't live in a flood plain because that's how flood insurance works. So we have a ton of people in town who suffered tremendous loss and couldn't get compensation or assistance because of it. We need to do more. There's a wall behind Van Ness Place and Beach Tree Road that is constantly overflowing. People's sewer drains getting cleaned out is not going to be a fix. It's a short-term Band-Aid fix. This has to be dealt with much faster. It's pressing. It's not going to get better. It's going to get worse and it has to be dealt with urgently.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next question. And this time we're going to start out with Stan.
I thought there's 30 seconds of rebuttal.
Oh yeah. Oh, are there rebuttals on this? Yeah. Okay, go ahead. You need to just raise your hand if you need a rebuttal. Okay, Mike?
Okay, so first of all, I just want to say that our drainage system, this infrastructure being inadequate, it's a little bit of a misnomer. The town doesn't have a drainage system. It's a hodgepodge of individual brooks and tunnels, many of which are not owned or managed by anyone that sit on private property. And although we certainly recognize the scope of the problem being huge, when our opponents say something has to be done now, I just want to warn them, nothing in government happens now. It doesn't work that way. You study, you plan, you budget, and then you act. And it's going to take, maybe the proper solution here is going to take millions of dollars in 10 years. I don't know, but it's not going to happen overnight. We're working on it.
Thank you. Okay, another rebuttal. Stan, did you have a rebuttal?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So first, I've owned and operated an insurance agency for the last 25 years. And everyone in the state of New Jersey can buy flood insurance on their property, tenants, homeowners. You don't have to live in a flood zone. It's actually pretty inexpensive for West Caldwell residents because none of us are in a flood zone. The other thing I'd like to point out is these problems, really, while you think they've happened over the last few years, they've been happening over the last 50 years of overdevelopment in New Jersey. And our neighboring towns in North Caldwell and Caldwell have been overdeveloping and I'm not sure their planning boards have been acting accordingly. Our planning board certainly does and we're very concerned with water retention and overdevelopment. And I'll end there.
Okay, and Jessica, do you have a rebuttal? Yes, Jessica?
Sorry, I was not prepared. I thought there was no.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Stan, you just acknowledged that this has been happening over the last 50 years, but you've been on the council for 12 of them and seeing it happen. I mean, this is not a new problem. This is an old problem. We can go ahead and blame overdevelopment, but something needs to be done. And as far as not owned by anyone, I mean, the brook behind me clearly has an easement made out to the town for stormwater maintenance. And parts of this town are in flood zones. If you look at the FEMA map. So, you know, I just really think the council needs to come together, work with either the surrounding communities, the DEP and the state to figure out how to solve this problem because it's not going away.
Thank you. Okay, and Kristy? Do you have a rebuttal?
I do. Thank you. The town certainly owns the sewer line that backed up three times into my basement over the course of one week. I mean, you haven't lived until you've had three inches of sewer water in your house in the middle of August. The infrastructure thing, you were on zoning. I mean, you know this is a problem. And yet now we're talking about putting in a large impervious structure ball field where there's grassy space that could help alleviate a flood problem. It doesn't make any sense to me. That area floods as it is and we're just going to add to the problem by putting a field in. I don't understand why we would do that.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to the next question. Okay. And the next question is this, and we're going to start out with Stan. Does West Caldwell need a new municipal complex? If so, what should be included in it? So that would be for Stan to answer first.
I think right now, if you're talking about a new town hall, Susan, I guess, is that what the question's meaning?
It's, so the term that's used in the question is a new municipal complex.
I don't know exactly what the questioner meant by municipal complex, but we have a town hall which is connected to our library. It's about 50 years old and we have been studying and talking about it to create a new state-of-the-art town hall. We're actually looking at the old recreation site, which is right across from the fire department. So I think that would be something that we would be looking at. And I'd love to see the library be expanded to create a teen center upstairs in the library where our current municipal chambers are. I'd love to have a place where the kids could go and be off the streets and really get things done. I'm just going to yield the rest of my time to eventually ask about Harrison School Field to see if Kristy Lazaro and Jessica Almeida are for or not for that project. But I can tell you by putting that field in, Kristy, and this is what you should know, there'll be better drainage than there is with a grassy field. When you put in these turf fields, it's all about drainage and focusing the water to other areas. So you're completely wrong there.
Thank you. Okay, so the question is, Jessica, you're going to answer next. Does West Caldwell need a new municipal complex? If so, what should be included in it? Go ahead.
So as Stan said, our building and the library, they were redone recently. We're not in the same position then. Thank goodness, as Caldwell, whose borough hall is falling down. But some things that we've learned from our neighbors to the east is that we need to have some type of recreational facility and something that's maintained for our residents, because a lot of our residents were going to the Caldwell Community Center and paying a premium to utilize their facilities and that has since closed. We don't have the ability to do that anymore. So something that if we are putting in a municipal complex, something I would like to see is a recreation area for our residents. There's also the pool at the community center, which is utilized by many of our local swim teams. And it would be great if we are putting something like that in to see that. I'd also like to see some services such as counseling for our residents and bringing back the youth employment service, which was a big deal when I was younger. When you were 13, you registered with the youth employment services and it helped young women, young men get jobs in the community. So those are things I would like to see if we do embark upon a new municipal complex.
Thank you. Okay, and Kristy Lazaro? Does West Caldwell need a new municipal complex? If so, what should be included in it?
I think our current municipal building serves its purpose. I don't think we need to really expand that. I mean, obviously, if we're going to expand anything, it would be great if we could share services. I know our neighbor to the east is struggling with their library right now. I think it would be tremendous if we could work with them in that capacity. It would be great if we could work with them, with the Caldwell Community Center, since they already have an existing structure. I think it would be very fiscally responsible if we could use existing structures instead of trying to build new buildings. I know the building at the corner of Bloomfield and Fairfield is historic, so we really can't knock that down to build something new. So we would really need to be careful in that regard. I know there's a lot nearby, but I think if we can use existing buildings, we ought to. It's smarter.
Thank you. Okay, and last person to answer that question would be Mike.
Thank you, Susan. So if we defined a municipal complex as a town hall, I do think we are going to need one. And as I pointed out earlier, government moves slow. That's just the reality. So if we want a new town hall someday with an expanded library, which we absolutely should have, and perhaps even an upgraded facility for our police department, we're going to have to think about that now. We're going to have to plan for it now. We're going to have to budget for it now. So I think that in the coming year or two, this is a conversation that's got to continue so we can put a plan in place to get that facility built. Maybe it's five or 10 years down the road. I will take a community center as a separate issue. I do not know if we need a community center. Certainly our neighbors in Caldwell didn't fare well with their community center. Ultimately, I think we'd do a whole lot better, but it's not going to be, it's not practical for it to be in the same complex as town hall. So I would deal with that as a separate issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any rebuttals to that question? Yes, Stan?
Yeah, I wanted to point out a couple things, Susan. The Caldwell residents are welcome to the West Caldwell Library at any time. It was really that, very sad what happened there, but they haven't always have been welcome to our library. I just would want to comment because I didn't speak to a community center and I actually am in favor of one. Mayor Tempestis spoke the last two reorganization meetings about having a community center in West Caldwell. And during shared service meetings, I reached out to Caldwell and the Board of Ed and that partnership. The Board of Education is interested. Unfortunately, Caldwell is not interested. But I would love to see a new town hall, maybe with an indoor swimming pool and a recreation facility. We just kind of put it on the back burner because COVID, you know, for the last 18 months has caused some economic stuff, but we will revisit it.
Thank you. Okay, any other rebuttals? Now we're good? Okay, moving on to the third question and we're going to start at this time with Jessica answering. Does West Caldwell take proper advantage of its mix of residential and commercial property? Would you make any changes? Does West Caldwell take, take proper advantage of its mix of residential and commercial property? Would you make any changes? So that would be Jessica first.
So I'm very big in supporting small businesses. This is something Christine and I have discussed extensively. I really think we can do more as a community to help make the Passaic Avenue corridor more walkable. So recently this week, we received a letter from the town and from the police department that they're no longer going to patrol the Passaic Avenue intersection at Bloomfield, which makes it difficult for people who do not have cars to cross those streets, makes it difficult for childrens in the gardens to get to the high school or the middle school. And I was one of those walkers. I lived down off of Fairfield Avenue. So I would always walk to those areas to take advantage. Something I think we can do is in the area of the lower Passaic Avenue corridor, we are very overparked, especially in the stop and shop area. Something we could do and we could take advantage of, and there are grants available, is that we could make that area more park-like. We could widen the median. We could have different traffic, levels of traffic and different traffic interventions to make it a much more safer area and to make it more welcoming and to make it more walkable. And when you make things more walkable, we'll get more business and more people coming into town.
Thank you. Okay, and Kristy, does West Caldwell take proper advantage of its mix of residential and commercial property? And would you make any changes?
So piggybacking off of what Jessica said, that business area, we would love to see it become a true downtown. It is definitely not safe to walk in that area right now. And we understand that it's been deemed an unsafe walking area. Truly changes need to be made. I think that more businesses would be attracted to opening up in that area if we could create different structures. I mean, there's not even benches over there. There's nowhere to sit. Even driving over there is difficult. There's, there needs to be better signage, no turn on red. It would be much safer to cross streets over there if the proper signage and the traffic signals were to be changed. In terms of the mix of residential and commercial, I think it's fine. I mean, there's a good variation of ratables in the area. We have a lot of industrial which helps offset the tax base for the residential properties. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, and moving on now to Mike?
Thanks, Susan. So to Christie's point, I think it's extremely important that we have our commercial ratables in town. I think people have no, many people have no concept of how that lowers their taxes down on Fairfield Ave, Henderson Drive, Clinton Road. These are big businesses. I'm not talking about small storefronts, but big businesses that are paying a big chunk of the tax bill, which is why our taxpayers for the same house in West Caldwell are paying, I don't know, 20, 25% less in some cases than our neighboring communities. So I think we want to continue to embrace those large businesses, make them feel welcome here, invite them in, people like Amazon, who moved in here in the last two years, offsetting a tremendous amount of residential taxes. As far as a downtown area that was alluded to, I don't see it. I mean, we have a half a mile, a half a mile away, we have a downtown in Caldwell that we all take advantage of, and we should continue to take advantage of. Hopefully, when our local grocer relocates down on Bloomfield Ave corridor below Passaic Avenue, that's going to consume some of that property that seems to be blighted at this time. So I'm looking forward to that day.
Okay, and Stan? Does West Caldwell take proper advantage of its mix of residential and commercial property? And would you make any changes?
Absolutely, we take advantage of it, and this is where experience matters, Susan. We can't change the fact that we're 25% lower in taxes because we have companies like Amazon and corporate centers and nine corporate banks in town, and that brings traffic with it. So we have to balance that, and our police department works hard on the traffic. But Saic and Bloomfield Ave, where they intersect, there's always going to be traffic. That's the trade-off for the savings of 4,000 to 5,000 a year in taxes. So we can't use that area as a downtown or walkable, Jessica. We, we were deemed by the state of New Jersey, not West Caldwell making this decision, but the state of New Jersey says this is an unsafe area. This has been going on for two years. If you remember, the resident on ABC TV talking about her child having to walk to school two years ago. We've done the studies, you can't walk there. So we had to deem it an unsafe area. Times have changed with the traffic patterns. The Board of Ed sent out their letter that they're going to offer busing to all those students, and we just have to say that that's the right mix for West Caldwell. And as Mike says, we can go to Caldwell and walk into downtown.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals to that question? Now we're good?
No, I have one, Susan. I apologize. I highly disagree. I mean, Stan, I disagree. There are a lot of things you can do. And now this is where my experience doing land use, working with planners, working with architects, working with the DEP on a daily basis comes into play. There are a lot of things you can do to make that area walkable. And as far as our favorite grocer who's been relocating for, I don't know, since I was a kid. So say that does happen, then we have another blighted area, something else we have to deal with on Passaic Avenue. So as much as I'm looking forward to a new shop, right? I'm also looking forward to seeing what our town has planned for that other area and working with our state and local county and advocating as a council member to our state for money and funding to help make that intersection less dangerous.
Thank you. Okay, any other rebuttals? Yes, Christie?
We don't have a safe routes to school plan. Caldwell has one, we don't have one. We need to work with the county, and our township government is our connection to the county, and we just really need to get on top of that.
Okay, rebuttals by Banker Stan? Are you good? Okay, we're set. Okay, next.
No, no, I had my hand up.
Oh, your hand like is behind your knee. Does that make sense on the Zoom screen? Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with the safe routes to school, Christie. That's really a board of education system, and I try not to stick my nose in that board, and I do support what you said. I just am really concerned with development. I spoke to it with the water problems, and I look at your website as to the issues. And for the last two years on Jessica and Christie, you have four-story apartment buildings, and we can't have that. It's going to bring more traffic. So West Caldwell has an ordinance, no more than two stories. You can go on your website now, there's a picture.
Thank you. That's, that's the rebuttal time period. Okay, I think that's it for rebuttals. Okay, one, two, three. Yes, thank you. Okay. All right, next question, and we're going to start out this time with Mike. And here's the question. What is the biggest change in West Caldwell that you would push for if elected or reelected to the council? So we're going to start out with Mike Crudell.
Biggest change? I have to say, Susan, that's a tough one. I love this community the way it is. Would I change anything? I don't think we would change anything. I think we're working on improving our, the technology that we use as a township. Everything from the computers that our employees work on, the 911 system that our police department has to utilize, the equipment that our police, fire and EMS personnel are utilizing. But as far as wholesale changes to the community, I don't want it. We're a small bedroom community. That's why I moved here. That's why people are flocking here today. I don't see a need to change the character of our community. I just think we need to continue to manage it properly and try and introduce technology to keep up, you know, to continue keeping up with the times. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, and Stan? What is the biggest change in West Caldwell that you would push for if elected or reelected to the council?
Once again, I'm running for reelection to not change much. I always agree there could be room for improvement, so I'll speak to that. I'd like to continue to work with our neighbors on shared services. I think West Caldwell, West Caldwell's been a leader in West Essex on doing those things. And it's really shared services that, you know, I've been able to put together with the rest of the governing body over the last 12 years that have kept our taxes so stable. I mean, we've only really, three years, we didn't increase taxes at all, and a lot of times we didn't use the 2% cap. So if I was able to say the cost of bacon and milk and bread would have only increased maybe 10 to 12% over the last 12 years, I think that's really good. So, you know, I'm worried a little bit about some of the change that the other candidates are mentioning. I would like to continue to keep West Caldwell that beautiful bedroom community that it is and continue to strive to work on infrastructure and other improvements for the betterment of our residents.
Great, thank you. Okay, and Jessica?
Hi, Stan. I do apologize, but I'm looking at our website. There's no picture of a four-story apartment building on there. I'm not advocating for a four-story apartment building. What I am advocating and something that does need to change in our community is the fact that if we don't comply with our affordable housing mandates, we're going to get sued, and somebody's going to put in a six-story apartment building somewhere in town. Because they will, we, West Caldwell, will lose the right to put up any of the projects that we want, and we will lose our zoning power. And that's what's going to happen if we don't start complying with our affordable housing mandate. If you look at the fair share settlement, right there, it says you did not comply with your second round obligation. What I'm concerned about is that coming into our community. And our second round obligation is more than 12 years, more than four terms, more than two terms. This is something we have not complied with, and our town is going to change if we don't address that and figure out ways for us to do that. That doesn't include kicking Mountain Ridge out of their golf course, which we know they just hosted the LPGA. They're not going anywhere. And the other, one of the other areas, the town has been involved in litigation against them since 2013. The plan needs to be amended.
Yep, that's great. Okay, and Christie Lazaro? What's the biggest change in West Caldwell that you would push for if elected or reelected to the council?
I would push for improved communication. I think we have an ongoing problem about keeping our residents notified about things like construction, road maintenance. I know that my street was closed numerous times over the summer, and I received absolutely no notice of it. I know Jessica had work done right outside her driveway and couldn't even get out and had no notification about it. We have two different systems in town that they use, and neither are used particularly regularly. I get more notifications from neighboring towns than I do from our own. It's pretty ridiculous. I also think that we need to improve access to council meetings. I think the Zoom format is useful for a lot of people in our community. I know it's not easy sometimes, but I think once you get used to it, it's really not a problem. And I think that just making government more transparent and accessible to people is something they really value because then they feel like they're part of the process. I think their asking questions at council meetings should be a normal course of business, and people shouldn't be chastised or lambasted for asking questions at council meetings. It should just be something that happens in the normal course of things.
Thank you. Okay, okay, any rebuttals to that? Okay.
Mike can go first.
Mike, go ahead.
First of all, I'd say to Christie, if you attended or watched our council meetings, you'd see nobody gets lambasted at a council meeting. We invite all comers. We listen to all comers. We address all issues. In addition, you mentioned Zoom. I want you to know, if you understood the way it works, there's Zoom or there's in-person meetings. There is never both. There is never hybrid. As far as we are concerned, we've inquired with the state if we could do hybrid meetings. The answer was no. You do in-person or you do Zoom, one or the other. We've chosen to do in-person because that's the way it's always been done. And furthermore, although I'm going to let Stan expand on this to Jessica's COA point, Coalition on Affordable Housing, we are all over it. We have been all over it. We have been litigating this thing, negotiating this thing, year after year, trying to get it done, and we are ready to push it across the finish line.
Thank you.
So you're, you're misinformed.
Okay, Stan?
Mike, you hit it on the head. When we had Zoom meetings, we did budget meetings. Jessica and Christie were at none of them. No questions on the budget. You weren't on the Zoom call, period. Then we started meetings in person in June. Empty chairs. Neither one of you two were at any meetings. I don't know where you're coming up with lambasting people if you don't show up at the meetings. You should. If you're interested in really seriously running, you should be at those meetings, and you have not been, not at all. As far as, as Mountain Ridge, that's been settled, Jessica. That's over and done. It was a tax appeal. We have great relationships with Mountain Ridge.
Thank you. Okay. Jessica?
Yeah, yeah. So no, Stan, I was at the meetings. I have been at meetings. And the reason I don't attend the current meetings is because I don't know what you guys are going to talk about because you put your agendas up less than 24 hours before the meeting. And in order for me, as a mother, a working mother, I would have to find a babysitter, get coverage for my children for their events. I mean, you know, being a man of the blacktop as you are yourself, you understand that sometimes it's very hard within, with less than 24 hours notice to rearrange yourself and your children's schedule. So one thing when I am elected, I'm going to do is make sure those agendas are out there. Second, I'm very familiar with the sunshine law. I'm familiar with it. Our zoning board and our planning board are still meeting by Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, and Christie, do you have a rebuttal?
Sure thing. When Jessica and I were attending meetings, Jessica did ask a question about the field, and she was yelled at by Mayor Tempestis about her position on the field. Are you for it or are you against it? Which, Stan, you seem to want to take us to task about tonight. You said it earlier. I mean, come on, it's a ball field. It's not a for or against thing. It's a fiscal priority thing, not for, not against. It's prioritization. You've become tax and spend Republicans.
Thank you. Okay, there's some rebuttals. Okay, next question. What was it? Okay, all right, here we go. So we're going to start out with Stan is going to answer first, and the question is this. If you are elected or reelected to the council, how would you handle Caldwell's future affordable housing obligations? Start out with Stan.
So if you look at the history of affordable housing, it kind of was suspended when Governor Christie was elected. So things kind of sat in every municipality. And the municipalities, when Governor Murphy reinstated it, that rushed into the program were given settlements in the thousands of units. We don't have room for thousands of units in West Caldwell, Jessica. So we've been, we've been working since the inception, reinception of COA to look at sites that would be good to work with developers, maybe over 55. We were able to put units in there across from the current shop, right? So they don't tax our school system. But we didn't rush in like many municipalities did and got burned. So right now, we're looking at making a settlement of maybe about 200 units, of which maybe 60 would be of affordable housing. As Mike says, we're all over it. If you were coming to the meetings, and this is usually on the agenda, we would answer those questions. You could come and ask questions. You could bring your kids to the meetings. We can't have Zoom and in-person.
Thank you. Okay. So next up is Jessica to answer this question. If you are, if you are elected or reelected to the council, how would you handle Caldwell's future affordable housing obligations?
Well, first, just because this is actually what I do for a living. Most of the fair share housing settlements that were entered into in the beginning of the third round in 2015 can be, contained perverter clauses. So if at any time the courts did, which they did in the Mercer County case, find an obligation less than what Fair Share settled with, you were able to go back. So the burning thing, okay. West Caldwell also could apply for a vacant land adjustment, which they did during parts of the second round, which according to the settlement with Fair Share Housing, we did not completely comply with. There is still no COA. COA still does not exist. The courts, the courts are the ones who are actually providing the structure and the status of the affordable council on affordable housing. What we need to do is look at how to responsibly find ways. And I know how to responsibly find these ways because, again, it's what I do for a living. Find ways to use the mechanisms that COA provided, including bonuses for rental units. There is a cap, Stan. You can't put all the old people in affordable housing. There's a cap, a statutory cap of how many you can have affordable housing.
Okay, Christie?
Affordable housing is an obligation that we are not going to avoid, and the settlements are there. I think we're doing our residents an extreme disservice by continuing to be involved in extremely costly litigation. We need to accept the fact that the settlement is what it is. I understand that there's not just land laying around to build affordable housing, but for so long as we continue to, quote, "kick the can down the road" and try to avoid it, we're just racking up legal bills like there's no tomorrow, and it just gets thrown on our neighbors and their tax bill. It's not fair. It's just not. We're not doing anyone any favors by avoiding it. I don't think that during Governor Christie's administration, there was a pause put on affordable housing. I don't think the pause was ever there. I think affordable housing has been in effect for a number of years. So I just think we need to deal with the fact that it's reality, and we have to accept that.
Thank you. Okay, and Mike?
So I think this is a moot point. We are meeting our COA obligations. Our low and affordable housing obligations have been met. They've been submitted to the state. Thanks to COVID and delays in the court, we're waiting. We're waiting for final documentation. Judgment's been made. It's done. So we're talking about something that we don't have to deal with. We've been dealing with it for multiple years. It's, we're just waiting for the judge to push it across the finish line. We've already been informed that it's, our settlement is acceptable. And again, because of COVID and the slowdown in the courts, we're waiting. We're just waiting. We've done all the right things. Now we're ready to move this thing forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any rebuttals to this question? Okay, let's start out with, let's see, Stan, you have a rebuttal?
I do have a rebuttal, and the rebuttal is it's not expensive litigation if you're trying to negotiate with the courts a lower settlement of units. And that's what we've been doing, and we're waiting on their answer. We'll accept the 200 units with 60 low-income housing, and we're already talking to developers. I can't share that. It's closed session stuff that I think would work very well. But I'm a little concerned, Jessica. I just looked. What is that picture that is four units high? And the other one behind it is five stories high. On your website says review township departments and budgets, and I'm worried about building big apartments on Bloomfield Ave. It creates our water problems.
Stan, you are absolutely correct. I promise not to put any emojis or emoticons in West Caldwell once I'm elected. That is a simple graphic. It is not a rendering, and it's talking about protecting us from overdevelopment. That is ridiculous that you are actually contemplating that Christie and I would build a graphic or an image somewhere on Bloomfield Avenue, and it's a waste of everyone's time for you to even bring that up, frankly.
Okay, I think, I think that was your rebuttal, Jessica. Does that work?
No. What I was going to say is, can you guys point to a single, actually, I think the settlement that I'm looking at from June 17th, 2020, which is published on the West Caldwell Township website, shows that Mountain Ridge Country Club, you were to rezone that as affordable housing to comply with your round two, which ended 25 years ago, and you guys still hadn't done that as of June 2020. How many units have been built in West Caldwell during either the first, second, or third round of affordable housing? And I think the answer is not.
Thank you. Okay, great. Christie, do you have a rebuttal? Christie?
No, I don't.
No, you don't. Okay, and Mike? Mike, you have a rebuttal?
First of all, these are overlays on Jessica's. If this is your field, you should know that. All we are doing is setting up zones. All we are doing is setting up zones that developers can build affordable housing. Towns don't build affordable housing. Developers build affordable housing. When they come here, they have the ability to work in an overlay zone to build market units and low and affordable units. We've given them that opportunity. They don't have to build on Mountain Ridge. Mountain Ridge cannot be forced to sell their property. We've identified multiple other properties in town, including the Durkin Building. And I can mention that one because it's been on our agenda the last several meetings, including two days ago. That is a target property among others. And when developers come, if they come, they'll build there. If they don't come, we can't force them to build there. Towns just set aside the property and then we wait for developers.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the next question and we're going to start out with Jessica. And this question is going to be, um, what do you think of the current state of West Caldwell's relationships with its neighbors? Would you do something to change it? So let's start out with Jessica.
So, um, even though some of my opponents have said I do not attend the meetings, when they were on Zoom and we were able to participate and watch, um, I heard a lot of derogatory comments, especially relating to our neighbors to the east. These are people that our children go to school with, that we sit together in church or the synagogue. And these are our neighbors. Um, for one of those, the fields, we'll bring the field up. I've spoken to the West Caldwell Council, Caldwell, I'm sorry, the Caldwell Council. They indicated that there was never a point in time when they pledged the $150,000. They said they would speak about it, but they never pledged it. But meanwhile, we have an article that came out today or yesterday, I can't remember the date, um, saying that now our taxes are going up $18 a year because Caldwell won't contribute their fair share to the field. We need to work together with Caldwell. We, West Caldwell abandoned talks without even trying to look into the shared services as far as the police department. And again, I'm not saying I'm for or against the shared services with the police department, but it was something that you can, you can shake your head. Um, you'll have your opportunity to do, to speak. It was something that wasn't even fully vetted. And during the process, West Caldwell hired police departments, police officers.
And Christie Lazar?
I think that because of the fact that we share a school district with Caldwell and as Jess said, we have um, regular, constant relationships with Caldwell, we need to make sure that that relationship constantly remains strong. I think that we are not doing ourselves any favors when we belittle them, particularly during council meetings. It could come to a point where we may need their help with something. And if we continue to belittle them, they're going to tell us to stick it. And that's really not a place we want to be as a community. I think it's unfortunate that it came to that. I think it's unfortunate that we have to um, take our neighbors to court over sewers. I think that it's unfortunate that we have to refer to them as our neighbors to the east. And Jess and I have done it facetiously this evening. But it's, it's really unfortunate. I mean, we have friends who are on the council in Caldwell and they're not unreasonable people. They're really not. So I think it's important that we do look toward shared services and we do look toward continuing to have a good relationship with them.
Okay, and uh, next on that question would be, uh, Mike?
So first of all, I too would like to have a great relationship with the township of West Caldwell. Oh, well, with the township of Caldwell. We know all these folks personally. We know Mayor Kelly. We know every member of the council and we respect them. However, they lack experience and that's a big point that we're trying to bring up on the debate tonight. They're trying to find their way. I think they've got a town manager up there, part-time, which is crazy for a town their size to be working with a part-time manager that is clearly dictating the terms up there. And they're not good for the residents. And I'm going to tell you something, they're not easy to work with. We met with them seven times on police, could not come to an agreement. We all know their police department has been sued and settled several times. We don't want that kind of problem down here in West Caldwell. We've tried to work with them on the library. We have a salt dome we've offered to share. We've tried to share our gas depot. These are not easy folks to work with. And you're right, we are suing them on the sewer authority because the township of West Caldwell spends well over a million dollars on that sewer. And they're not giving us the capacity we need. For what? For affordable housing. Another holdup on affordable housing is the township of Caldwell. And that is why we've raised this litigation.
Okay, um, any rebuttals on this question?
I don't think Stan's got.
I didn't get to speak yet.
You're right. I already put down that you had. So go ahead.
No problem. No problem. So I'll start my minute here. So I I've been on the council for for 12 years and and I have enjoyed working with all the different West Caldwell, West Essex municipalities, North Caldwell, Roseland, Essex Fells, Caldwell, Fairfield. We work together. We're all in this together. So experience matters. The new governing body in Caldwell just does not want to share services with anything. We've offered them savings, whether it be lawn cutting, simple stuff. You know, they just don't want to work with us. So we've tried and we were there. We were there on the police. So Jessica, there was a million dollar savings a year per each township. And no, Mayor Tempesta did not walk away from the table. Mayor Kelly did. And that's why he went public because I think he made the wrong decision for his constituents. And you know what, Jessica? I will hire more police departments because public safety is my number one issue. I will keep our town safe. I will not defund our police.
Okay, do you have any rebuttals to this?
I have one, Susan.
Jessica? Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, you said defund police, like you were trying to say that Christie and I were going to defund police, but that's not accurate. So I just want to clear that up first and foremost, um, and make sure you're not putting words in either of our mouths. Um, you know, Caldwell is our next door neighbor. Um, you know, Caldwell and Mayor Kelly have a very different view of what the story is. Um, what I'd like to do is maybe you guys can produce the documents, produce the studies and, you know, why? Um, I was under the impression that you walked away and hired two police officers in the middle of the shared services debate. So, um, if that is incorrect, you know, I can, I appreciate the backup to show that that didn't happen.
Thank you. Okay, any other rebuttals? Okay, Christie?
I don't appreciate you trying to insinuate that we want to defund police. I have great appreciation for the police department in our town. I come from a family of civil servants who ran into burning buildings to put me through school, put clothes on my back, put food in my stomach. I do not appreciate that insinuation. I would appreciate an apology and I would appreciate it if you would walk that comment back. Thank you.
Okay, any other rebuttals? Stanley? Stan, sorry.
So, so I I respect our police department, our fire department, our first aid department. If you're not interested in defunding the police, you have my apology. But Jessica said, we walked away from a contract and hired two police officers. To me, if we don't hire two police officers after we've had two retirements, we have less of a police department. To me, that's defunding our police budget. We hired two police officers to replace retirements. That's it.
Okay, are we, so we're good with that? I think, okay. So, uh, next question. Okay, next question, we're going to start with Christie. And the question is, what was your most meaningful community service experience? What was your most meaningful community service experience? Starting out with Christie.
I actually had one very recently. Um, and and Jess is laughing because she knows exactly what I'm going to say. Um, I spent a Saturday morning very recently standing outside ShopRite collecting non-perishable foods for the Caldwell Food Pantry with the Qantas Organization. And I got to stand outside the ShopRite with Jess's mom. And it was probably the most fun I have had doing community service in my entire life. And I have done community service since I was a kid. Um, to watch the people of this community come together and be so generous. I can't tell you how much, we broke records collecting food that Saturday morning. People gave so much because they recognized that the pantry was empty. Um, it was such a lovely experience to just see people coming out. And people gave like bags and bags and bags of food and toilet paper and all kinds of things. Um, and it was just such a nice day. And it was just the best two hours I've spent in a long time watching people be so kind and so caring.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next is, uh, Mike. What is your most meaningful community service experience?
Well, I'm going to take a big picture view and say, I was, most people don't even know, but the five West Essex towns collectively own 150 acre property in West Milford called Camp Guianokee that's supposed to be used for community recreation. Most people don't even know it exists. I was voted in as president a few years back and uh, started to prepare that property for the future by revising the website, creating online reservations and marketing it. And during COVID, a year, where the year before the property was barely used during COVID, we had hundreds and hundreds of families come from all over the state, as well as all the communities that own the property, come out to use that property, um, where they didn't even know it existed before, giving them an outlet during COVID to get outside. Uh, however, I'd also like to mention just this morning, we were at Essex County Vo-Tech on Passaic Avenue for the grand opening. And I have to say, it was absolutely heartwarming to see the students cheer on their new principal as they cut the ribbon on their new school. What a wonderful addition to the uh, community of West Caldwell. So happy to have it. So glad that Joe D decided to make that investment in our town.
Thank you. Okay, and Stan? I need to know your most meaningful community service experience.
I'm going to give you two, Susan, because it's a tie. Um, and this was prior to COVID. But as a Eucharistic minister, I truly enjoy the times when I delivered the host to senior citizens who could not make it to mass. And sitting there with them and and saying some prayers and listening to their stories about life and and our country and our town and how things grew over time and and the experiences they went through was was amazing for me. Uh, and and I gained that knowledge on one end. And where the tie is, is when I share uh, experiences with our our local schools. Um, so I've been to the the middle school, uh, once again, not with COVID, but the prior years of going into the classroom, uh, sharing my experiences uh, on the governing body and 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 what helping run the town entails. And listening to youth and their exuberance and 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 their excitement with with politics and things. It's, it's like the the old generation and the future generation. And and that's really what community is all about.
Nice, thank you. Okay, and uh, Jessica?
Yes, um, I think most people know I am actively involved in the Qantas Club of Caldwell, West Essex. But I think a lot of people don't know why. Because when I was in middle school and high school, the club sponsored the Builders Club and Key Club. And they gave me a lot of opportunities um, to learn leadership skills and community service. And as part of my thank you for the scholarships and the leaderships and everything they gave me um, growing up, I joined the Qantas Club and I'm currently the president-elect. And over the past year, we've had a lot of challenges. Um, not able to do the community service events we usually did. So some things that we did were virtual drives. We did virtual events for the children. Um, we did a, and once we were able to return in person, we did a car seat safety event where we free of charge let residents come and have their car seats inspected. I worked with the West Caldwell Recreation and Bob Masella to do a bike safety event where we collected 50 helmets, which went to children in town who needed one um, or who did not have one. And even following the event, we continued to distribute them to people who needed them. Um, as Christie said, we collect food for the food pantry. But right now, we've identified 25 families and we'll be providing Thanksgiving and working to provide Thanksgiving dinner. So, um, I'm very community minded and minded. And uh, my service with Qantas is something that I'm extremely proud of.
Okay, are there any rebuttals?
I just want to let Stan know that that middle school thing that you enjoy, I get to do that every day for my job. How lucky am I, right? It is the coolest thing ever.
It's all about the kids.
It is a blessing to teach children about how great our country is and our government and the functions and stuff. I love it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I have another, okay, next question. Uh, we're going to start out this question with, okay, start out this question with Mike. And the question is, how do you feel about the current management of the Recreation Department? Would you like to see changes in how the department is run? Starting with Mike.
Listen, there's always room for improvement, but I'm going to tell you something. When it comes to recreation, people are very passionate about it. And I have to tell you, now I may be missing but I am not aware of any recreation department in any municipality that gets all five star ratings across the board. People are, oh, there's always going to be people that are not satisfied with what they're getting. I'm going to tell you, as a parent of three, Director Gabe Demasi, Assistant Director Parish Mulawitz, our entire team, Andrew Wondown, they do a fantastic job for a little town of 12,000 people to have 160 programs, two pools, gazebo concerts, senior programs. I I think we do a fantastic job. I I, listen, do I always see eye to eye with the Recreation Department? No. But when we don't see eye to eye, we meet and we try and work it out. I don't think we've got to do anything in terms of changing the current management of the Recreation Department. We have to strive for continuous improvement, yes. But do we need wholesale changes? Absolutely not.
Thank you. Okay, um, number two, let's see, Stan?
I love our Recreation Department. Mike, you said it well. I mean, from the top on down, I mean, with really only four people that are kind of working full time and and a lot of part timers and a lot of volunteers. We run so many programs. And you know what, Susan? We got it right during COVID. We were able to open the pools. No one else in West Essex decided to do that. And and kudos to our governing body for taking that step and giving an outlet to our families the last two summers of a place to go and the kids to swim. And and we got it right, you know, having basketball season last year. No one wanted to do anything indoors with COVID. We didn't have one case. We didn't have fans in the stands. We put the games on via YouTube and and we did it and we and we did it safely. And and I I can't stress enough how great our Recreation Department is. We'll continue to work on communications and everything else, but I wouldn't change a thing.
Thank you. Okay, and Jessica? How do you feel about the current management of the Recreation Department? How would you like, would you like to see changes in how the department is run?
So I grew up, um, playing soccer, softball, basketball, and I was a major at. So if someone wants to pull those pictures out through the twirling department. Um, and I have been involved in recreation from every aspect. The one thing that does bother me about the current situation is that we no longer have any programs for the little ones. Um, it seems to start in third grade. And I understand that a part of that is that there are private clubs, such as the Caldwell, West Caldwell Soccer Club, which my dad actually was one of the founding members. And the Little League, which my husband and I helped find, found. Um, one of the the problems they have is finding fields and places to host these events. And our Recreation Department isn't allowing um, them to use some of their facilities, creating a lot of issues such as bathroom issues for recently potty trained three and four year olds playing T-ball. Um, they're using Board of Ed fields and county fields. But I would like to see recreation, since these are programs formerly run by recreation, work with these developmental leagues to allow them to use the facilities and more than anything else, the bathrooms. Because a recently potty trained toddler is a very difficult thing when you don't have a bathroom.
Thank you. Okay, and Christie?
I I do want to piggyback off of what Mike said. I think it's a continuous improvement type of situation. Um, I do think that um, it was great that we had summer camp this year for the kids. Um, my daughter was able to attend, which was good. She really enjoyed herself. Um, I do think that our summer camp counselors need to be first aid trained. Um, that really is very important. Um, I'm sure Jess will touch on that in a few moments. Um, the other thing I would love to see, I would love to see some activities for some of us middle aged folks. It'd be great to have something to do with our friends. Um, but yeah, I think continuous improvement model would be something to strive for. Um, there's definitely good offerings for for the kids. I I agree with that. Um, and I appreciate the fact that it's not just sports. I appreciated the fact that during COVID, they got a little creative and offered a video game league for them. I thought that was really cute. Um, so I appreciate that they're trying to appeal to all of the kids in town, not just, you know, the athletes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, any rebuttals to that? Yeah, Mike?
So I just wanna say, one point was, you know, are we supporting clubs with the proper number of fields? We said this before, we need fields, we need more fields, we know that. That's why we're working on Harrison. And by the way, the fields, when you say we should open up the clubs to be able to use township fields, I don't know what township fields exactly we're talking about. Most of our sports are playing on Board of Ed fields. We worked extensively with Little League to give them what they need. We work with the lacrosse club and the soccer club to give them what they need. We only have so much to give and most of those facilities, you're right, Jess, they don't have bathrooms, but there's only so much we could do. I just wanna make it a point to say, we are supporting all of our clubs outside of the Recreation Department just as, just as much as we're supporting our interior groups.
Hi, anybody else have a rebuttal?
I think you can go first.
Stand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, there's so many more programs and sometimes sports are playing double seasons. I know this year with Little League, we were able to give them time at San Francisco Field, which is a great field for Little League. And we'll continue to work with them and all our clubs to give them space. It's one of the primary reasons and I still don't know, and I'm not gonna pin you down if you're for or not for Harrison School Field, but it's one of the reasons we're turfing it. That field has been there for 60 years and when it rains, it doesn't have any proper drainage. We'll take care of the water and we'll have a nice new turf field for more field use for clubs.
Thank you, Jessica, do you have any rebuttal?
Yes, Christie touched on it very recently. My son was involved in an accident at Memorial Park this summer. Kids are kids, they're gonna fall, they're gonna get hurt and it's completely within the realm of what's gonna happen. But what I was really disappointed about and something that when we're elected, I wanna make sure is that first aid, they didn't have a first aid kit that had all the supplies necessary. The ice bags were old, they had to be beaten until they oozed and we had to take, you know, my son with an oozing ice bag tied with a piece of cloth around a clipboard. So one thing I do wanna make sure, and you know, even if this is something we have to get Quanis involved with or other organizations, to make sure that we have the proper first aid and the proper first aid training at all of our community events, including rec and basketball and soccer.
Thank you, and Christie, do you have a rebuttal?
The only other thing I wanted to add is, I would really like to see the pavilion at Memorial Park be improved because I had to go in there during the end of camp carnival. It's not structurally sound, you can see it, I mean, all you have to do is look at it from the outside. And I know West Caldwell prides itself on its parks and its recreation facilities. I think it's really important that if that park and that facility is used as often as it is, and it really is, it's kind of a centerpiece, that that building be safe for everyone to use.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Okay, this is pretty open-ended question. And we're gonna start out with Stan, how do you plan to control taxes? There you go.
It's a great question. You know, been working at it for the last 12 years and it's a moving target every year because, you know, there's rising cost of healthcare. There obviously salaries have to increase. And the way we've been able to do it on this governing body is through shared services. So I think shared services are the key. I wish we could have done that with our police department. We're doing it now with dispatch with other West Essex towns and that's gonna save money. And that's how you can control taxes. And you take that money and you reinvest it. You reinvest it in infrastructure and other areas. If you look, we do 12 roads a year now on average. And this way, you, water mains, we do, you end up not having maintenance problems costing a lot more money. So reinvesting is very smart right now while interest rates are low. And I think West Caldwell taxes have been extremely affordable when you look at other Essex County towns.
Thank you. Okay, and Jessica? How do you plan to control taxes?
Sorry, I was muted. You know, there, as Stan and Mike have said, there's been a lot of development and a lot of new large-scale basis such as Amazon and Qui- Quagen, I mispronounced that. And if you look currently, as you come down Long Meadow Lane, looking over Passaic Avenue, a very large building is being put in the back of those areas. So continuing to attract businesses, both large and small, because small businesses also give back and they give back through sales tax and they give back through residents of the community. And in order to do that, I do really wanna strengthen the smaller businesses in town. Go, and one thing Christine and I did do was, we started Shop the Caldwell's where we were advertising sales. We were coming live from craft fairs, we were trying to bring light to businesses in the Caldwell's. Because, you know, when you spend your dollars in West Caldwell, they stay in West Caldwell. I'd rather spend my dollars at a store in town than give them to Amazon. So even though Amazon is a great ratable, that's not what I was intending, but thank you.
Thank you, okay, and Christie?
I think that we would want to take a look at all of the departments in town and all of the budgets and just make sure that we're doing everything on the up and up. All of the contracts are being given in the best, most cost-efficient ways possible. And we would just wanna make sure that the vendors are the most cost-efficient. Wanna make sure the dollars are being spent in the best way possible. I apologize, the train is going by my parents' house. So I think that, you know, as long as we can ensure that the dollars are being spent in the best way possible and we're maximizing them, I think that's one of the most important things we can do. And yes, supporting all businesses locally are very important, small, large. The ratables, there's no question, it's a huge attractor. It's part of why Caldwell's taxes are so much higher than ours. They do not have those, those large-scale ratables that we have. We're very fortunate in that regard.
Thank you. And Mike?
Thanks, Susan. So first of all, I think many people don't understand, I don't mean anybody here in this forum, but I think a lot of residents don't understand that we, the mayor and council, don't control your taxes as a whole. 55% of your taxes go to the Board of Ed, we have no control over that. 22% go to the county, we don't have any control over that. Another 22 or 23% go to the township and you get a tremendous amount of services for your dollar. I agree that we should continue to be a community that invites in business, large business in particular, if we're talking strictly about taxes. And I think we just gotta continue to invest in our infrastructure so we're not doing emergency repairs down the road that are extremely costly and I'll just add one point. You know, I know Christie, and this point's come up before. Our municipal books are audited. Everything we do financially is subject to an independent municipal auditor. And as a matter of fact, this is a 228-page book, it's published every year. It's an audit of the entire financials of the Township of West Caldwell. 10 years worth are on our website, you should check it out, it would make you feel much more comfortable about what we're doing here.
Okay, any rebuttals? Jessica?
Yeah, just, I just wanna, Christine and I have discussed this extensively, audit doesn't mean just auditing the financials. It also means auditing the programs and who's getting those contracts, making sure we have an open contract process, making sure things are gone out for RFP, making sure when we hire, I don't know, staff for a recreation program, that we're getting the best dollar for, or the best value for our dollars. So it's, I know that townships are all, you know, subject to an audit each year, but we meant more in particular auditing the departments and looking at the programs within each one to see if they're being, the tax dollars are being used efficiently. So I wanted to make that one.
Thank you. Okay, any other rebuttals to that? Stan?
I just wanted to make note that when we put things out for bid, we have to accept the lowest responsible bidder. It is what it is and I can't remember the last time in my tenure that a bid has been challenged that we did something that wasn't right for the residents of West Caldwell. So as their advocate, your advocate, we always try and do what we have to do, which is the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you. Okay, any other rebuttals? No? Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, Mike?
I just wanna say to Stan's point, the request proposal process is a state mandated process. We follow the rules, that's why you don't read about West Caldwell in the paper. We use the contractors that are approved, we do use the lowest bidder. I know it bothers people that they seem to see the same vendors come around year after year, but the bottom line is these companies know our town and how we operate. And we, if we can, like to use people that have experience with the issues here in West Caldwell.
Okay. I think, Christie, do you need a rebuttal?
Sure, I mean, you don't have to accept the lowest bid, you can reject all of them and rebid the whole project. That's always an option.
Okay, okay. That concludes the questions for the evening. I'd like to move to closing statements at this point in time. Each candidate will have two minutes to close. And we started in one direction, we're gonna go the other way. So Christie, go ahead with your closing statement first. Two minutes, please.
Okay, I wanna thank everyone for joining us tonight. It's been a pleasure. I know I mentioned to Kathy the other day, I was really hoping this year we'd get to do this in person, but alas, was not to be. It's really a pleasure to be able to debate in this forum. Stan, Mike, thank you so much, it was a pleasure to have this conversation with you. Jess and I truly care about our community. And for Jess, having lived here her whole life and for me having taken West Caldwell on as my family's home, chosen very carefully. You know, we take our town very seriously, we love our community, we're very involved in our community as well. And while I understand that, you know, Mike and Stan say experience matters, Jess and I have experience too, we just have experience in different ways. I have a lot of experience dealing with floods and storms. I worked on the Little Falls Property Maintenance Committee during Hurricane Irene and Blue Acres. So I know a lot about stormwater management and property maintenance. It would be my absolute pleasure to serve on Township Council and I sincerely hope that you will cast your ballot for me in November. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, and Jessica?
Thank you and thanks everybody for coming together again. I, you know, different than Christie, I actually appreciate the Zoom context because that could let more people be a part of this process. We have 15 attendees and I think it was up to 19 at one point. So I do appreciate that. So I'm running, not only because I'm a lifelong West Caldwell resident, but I'm running because everybody needs an advocate in local government. For far too long, since Watergate, we've had one-party rule in this town and things get discussed, questions get asked, but they're not discussed in open. People in the open Township Council meetings, I mean, I've gone to more than just the ones that people like to plug, but, and I've watched other ones. And as part of my job, I go to a lot of council meetings all over the state. And, you know, there's other towns who have a one-party lock on the council, but they talk about things. And we understand what happens during those conversations. So, and we understand what goes into that. So I wanna take my experience as a trained attorney and especially in land use and redevelopment and be able to use those skills to be another voice on the council, to discuss these questions and to bring that experience to all of the citizens of West Caldwell. So thank you everybody and good luck to everybody in the coming weeks.
Okay, and Stan?
Thank you, Susan, I'd like to thank you, the entire league, Kathy from the Progress, Brett with your time cards, you're a good man. You know, it was a pleasure being in this debate. I wanna, you know, say thank you to Christie and Jessica. There is no doubt in my mind that both of you are very passionate about West Caldwell. And you're raising your families here, you should be and I see, I see how you care. I just think that in this particular election, we've gone through some challenging times the last couple of years and there could be some more challenges ahead. And the experience that I say matters really is twofold. It's one in municipal government and it's two with, you know, the fiscal part of it with, with, you know, Mike and I've run companies for 25 years and we've worked on budgets and inspired our employees to thrive and we've led. And I just think that, that Mike and I are the better choice come November 2nd. Our passion is there. Truly, when I say I wanna be the advocate for every West Caldwell resident, I've listened on the blacktop of Washington School. My youngest Lauren just graduated there last, last summer and she's onto the middle school. But I'll never forget all the days on the Washington School blacktop talking. I have empathy, I listen, I'm the voice of the constituents and I take that very, very seriously. And, you know, whether it be, you know, in the ShopRite, like I said, or on the fields at EBS or in the gym, I'm always gonna listen, you know, my email's there, I email residents all the time, I'm very accessible. And our governing body is accessible at the meetings. We really love to have that room filled and we could talk about the issues. This is not a partisan thing. We all want the same things in town. So I've been here, you know, for our community during these tough times and I look forward to continuing to be there, you know, to represent our community in the prosperous times. So I ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Mike?
Thanks, Susan, and thanks to everybody who made this event happen tonight. I sincerely appreciate it. In closing, I just wanna reiterate that, as Stan said, as we've said multiple times tonight, experience matters. Members of the, members of the public may know these ladies, I'm sure they're great moms, wives, neighbors, employees. But when it comes to the job of being a town councilperson, or any job for that matter, experience matters and a vote for Crudell and Hillettic is a vote for experienced leadership. Look, Councilman Hillettic and I are coming back so we can put our 18 years of experience on the council, 40 years of experience in business to work for the residents of West Caldwell. So it continues to be the great community that we all have come to love, a great place to live and raise a family. I'd ask each voter to ask, what do Mike and Stan stand for? I'll tell you, we stand for a safe community. We'll invest in the training and technology to allow our police, fire and EMS personnel to continue to be the very best. We'll continue to invest in our infrastructure, make long-term investments, continue to fund our Recreation Department so they can continue to offer the great programs that we have here in town. We're committed to funding our library to ensure it continues to offer not just books for cutting-edge technology and programs to our residents. Unfortunately, I must, I absolutely must question our opponent's platform. I'm confused, what is it? I'll tell you what it is, so if you're still wondering who to vote for, consider this. They want to, and I quote, coming from the website, "Number one, increase transparency." It's come up multiple times tonight, but what does that mean, I don't know. Number two, stop wasteful spending. But what wasteful spending? Come to a council meeting, read the budget, read the audits, you'll see, there's no wasteful spending here. And third, they're gonna improve your quality of life and I, I want you to ask yourself, how exactly are they going to do that? Now, on Tuesday, November 2nd, please make it a point to come out and cast a vote for experienced leadership. Cast a vote for Crudell and Hillettic. As always, we sincerely appreciate your support. We thank you and wish you a good night.
Thank you. Okay, so I, just before we wrap it up for the night, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows to vote on November 2nd. I get confronted by a lot of different people that often tell me that their vote doesn't matter and that special interest groups and big business have all the power. I don't believe that that's even remotely close to being true, particularly when it comes to local politics. So take some time and you've got three different methods, one of which you can use, not all three, three different venue avenues, I guess you could say, to vote. You can do your vote by mail, your in-person early voting, or your actual voting at your voting poll place on Election Day. And that's it. Thank you to all the candidates for participating, it was a great forum.